All right, check one, two, test, test. Good? Okay. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the monthly meeting of the City of Des Moines zoning board of adjustment. This board has the power under Iowa law and the zoning ordinance of the City of Des Moines to hear and make decisions on requests for variances and exceptions from the regulations in the zoning ordinance, to review conditional use requests, and to consider appeals from any decision of city staff in the administration of the zoning ordinance. The members of this board are citizens of the City of Des Moines. They have been appointed to this board by the city council. The board members are volunteers, and they receive no compensation for their public service. I'll take a moment here to introduce our board members. On the audience's right is Tom DiCio. Next to him is Dave Gare, and next to him is Rhonda Sedillo. I'm Mel Pins, the board chair, and on my right is Marla Jones, and next to her is Heather Ann Rowe. And we have one member who may be joining us a little later here in the hearing today. We'll just have to see. We're a seven-member board, but we've at least got six of us here. I'll introduce the city staff, who will be assisting us with today's hearing. The legal counsel for the zoning board of adjustment to my left is Mr. Gary Guidelock. City staff here down in the row, and the audience's left Frank Dunn Young, senior city planner, Katherine Drehouse, city planner, and Chris Hiles Cove, zoning enforcement officer. I'll go over the meeting's procedure here for some of you. This may be your first time in front of the board. You may hope it's your only time, but we'll explain how the hearing works, but then for each agenda item, we will take you through it. So don't worry if you're like, "I don't remember that," or "When do I stand up or sit down?" We'll guide you through it. But to give you some background here, the zoning board of adjustment is a quasi-legal board. This hearing will be conducted within the procedures and format as authorized by Iowa law and this city's ordinances. The meeting is open to the public. The meeting is being recorded by both audio and video for a legal record of these proceedings. The board members have each received a copy of the agenda and the staff recommendations. The board is required to base its decision on each item upon the criteria established by law for the type of relief sought by the applicant. The applicable law for each case is identified in the written staff report. If the facts, as determined by this board, demonstrates that the criteria established by law for granting the relief has been satisfied, then the board must grant the relief. Otherwise, the board must deny the requested relief. Each item on the agenda will be announced in the order that it appears on the agenda. Items that are listed on the consent portion of the agenda, which is our first section of the agenda, those items are not planned to be individually discussed. They will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report, unless the appellant does not agree to the conditions that have been recommended by staff, or if there's an individual in this audience or a board member that requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda so that a full discussion on the matter can occur. And again, I'll come back to the consent agenda if we need to look at any questions that you might have on that. For the regular portion of the agenda that follows, after an item is announced, city staff will first give a brief overview of the appeal. They will present any written comments that have been received prior to the hearing. Then the applicant, or their representative, will be allowed up to 10 minutes to present their appeal. We'll then move to the public comment portion of the hearing for that agenda item. Anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in support of, in opposition to, or even in neutrality of an appeal will be allowed up to five minutes each to provide their comments. This will be their one and only opportunity to address the board for the agenda item at hand. Once all concerned citizens have spoken, the board will then ask any additional questions of city staff. And lastly, the applicant will be given three more minutes for a rebuttal or other closing comments. All speakers are requested, and frankly, must speak only from the podium here at the center of the room. We've got a microphone, a little screen that'll show you what's going on. You will first need to give your name and address, whether your address be of business or residence as appropriate, in the event that you may need to be contacted for any legal notices related to the outcome of the appeal. All speakers are requested to remain courteous and to focus their comments only upon those facts that demonstrate whether or not the criteria established by law has been satisfied. Speakers are also asked to ensure that they are respectful of time considerations. If necessary, the board chair will limit further comments by speaker if they exceed their time limitation. The board chair will then close any further public comment on the agenda item after all comments have been received. The board will immediately deliberate the request. We'll make a decision here today on the appeal. Please note that it always takes at least four affirmative votes for any zoning appeal to gain approval. If your appeal is approved today, we'd ask that you wait until at least about one week from today's hearing if you would need to contact the city's permit and development center to obtain any necessary building or sign permits that are related to your appeal. This will allow the decision of this board to be documented in the form of a decision and order that will be provided to both you and city staff for the record. Any appeal that is approved by this board must be implemented, constructed, or otherwise utilized within two years of the date of the decision by this board, or such approval shall expire. Finally, the decisions of this board can only be appealed in the Iowa district court. So if you believe you've been harmed by an error made by this board, your only remedy is to seek relief through the court within 30 days of the filing of the board's decision and order. If you believe the zoning regulations applied by this board are wrong, you may petition the city council to change those regulations for future considerations. And Frank, would you rotate that just so the audience can have it? I've got my own copy here, just so they can follow along as I talk. Any material written or otherwise used today is part of any presentation, is part of the permanent record, and you may contact city staff after the hearing if you need a copy. So again, if anybody disagrees with our decision here, you've got 30 days to file in court. Some housekeeping items, we'd ask that you please avoid any undue conversation in the audience so as to limit distractions during the hearing that is in progress. You're doing a fine job with that. Please also ensure your cellphone has been silenced. I gotta check my own for that. If you need to use a restroom, you can just leave through the doors here. You don't have to go back downstairs, walk past the staircase, and there are some restrooms on your left by the elevator. Once the agenda item you're interested in has been completed, you're welcome to leave the hearing. We'll have a five-minute break in the hearing around 3:00 or thereafter if needed. I'm hoping we won't need to go that late. So what we'll do now is we'll take a look at the agenda as it has been presented and see if we've got any changes on that agenda. So I'll have Frank come up, and he can give us a little background info here.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the board. Staff is requesting that item one be moved to the discussion portion of the agenda. We did receive some comments that are of neighboring concerns that are relevant to the case, and we wanted to bring it in front of the board for discussion. So we are requesting that item one be moved to the discussion portion of the agenda. Additionally, staff is requesting that item three, which is construction of a 45,000-square-foot three-story building addition for a full-service addiction recovery and recovery housing campus to include a person-centered outpatient services and education residential programming, administration, and detoxification facility, as well as the existing 5,353-square-foot outpatient services building. They're needing a conditional use for group living, not otherwise classified residential use. Staff is looking to have that item moved to the consent portion of the agenda. The applicant has agreed to all of the conditions of approval.
Okay, and I will pull the audience on this here. So as Frank mentioned, staff has requested that this conditional use on item 3 at 3451 Easton be moved to our consent agenda, which generally would mean the board's request to make an approval without a testimony hearing, if you will, on this one. The applicant is amenable or agreeable to the special conditions that would be necessary for the conditional use. But by four, we would determine if we want to move that to consent for automatic approval, if you will. Is there anybody here in the audience that would be opposed to this board granting approval of the conditional use of 3451 Easton Boulevard? If so, just raise your hand. Okay, we've got at least one, two? Okay. So what we'll do, with audience members present, it would certainly be in everyone's best interest for us to have a full hearing on this item, so we can hear testimony and all concerns and comments. So we will leave item three on the regular portion of the agenda. Let's see. And Frank, remind me, item two stays on the regular portion?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, all right. And item one will go to discussion, so then in essence, we're gonna have three items on our regular agenda. So, all right, so we don't have a consent agenda. All right, then what we'll do, basically, we'll just go, I think, order of appearance? Would that be amenable? Okay. All right, so what we'll do is we'll start off with our regular hearing. For item one, it's a conditional use request in the vicinity of 413 Euclid Avenue. And again, we'll have staff give some brief background on this, the staff recommendation, and then we'll take testimony from the appellant and the general public.
Chair, members of the board, if there were comments to move something from consent to general, does that require the board action?
I don't know that it does. It probably doesn't hurt to just do it, just so that it's not a question. I don't think it does, but...
Yeah. So, board members, with some comment cards that have been received, with some concerns that might warrant further review, would there be a motion to move item one to the regular portion of the agenda for full discussion? All right, move by Marla. Second by Rhonda. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye. Seeing no opposition, motion carries 6-0. All right. Thank you, Frank and Gary. So then item one is a conditional use request in the vicinity of 413 Euclid Avenue, and Katherine's gonna give us some background.
Chair, members of the board, Katherine Drehouse, planner for the City of Des Moines. As mentioned, the property before you is located at 413 Euclid Avenue. This property is looking to add both an assembly use and a alcoholic, sales of alcoholic liquor, wine, and beer to their assembly use. Let me just scroll down a little bit. For on-premises, excuse me, on-premises sales and consumption. And I'm just gonna change this. There we go. Property is in front of you. It consists of two parcels, one located fronting on Euclid, and then one fronting on the northern parcel, fronts on Fifth, I believe. And it's predominantly the parking lot parcel. This parcel was rezoned last August to allow the parking lot use. At that time, conditions were put on it so that it could be rezoned to MX-1 district from N5. And the conditions include residential uses permitted by the MX-1 district and surface parking accessory to the permitted use on the property to the south. So those are the only uses allowed within that parcel under the MX-1 zoning. Whoops. Looking at the property from Euclid Avenue, a little bit along the side, and then the parking in the rear is a little hard to see, but I do have a view here. They're still working on some of the various components, including their proposed outdoor And then, this is actually, I'm gonna zoom in, actually quite a bit of information on this one, but what we're looking at is predominantly along the lower part of the page here. Pretty heavy page, so... That just gives you a little bit of the proposed interior that they're working on, and then this gives you a little bit more of a high-level overview. You'll be looking at, the blacked-out portion is different parts of the buildings adjacent to them. And then, you can see that they've got seating and consumption located in these general areas, and then they're proposing seating and consumption outdoors along the patio that they put between the building and the parking lot, so in the green space here. This is the narrative provided by the appellant at the time of application. Their hours, they're proposing, are 4:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. for the event space, I believe, on Friday and Saturday nights. And I can come back to this if I went too quickly, so just let me know. So as mentioned, they are looking to add both that assembly conditional use and the conditional use to allow sales and consumption of on-premise alcohol, liquor, wine, and beer. Staff feels that generally, they meet all of the conditional use criteria, as long as they operate with the conditions of approval. And those conditions of approval include, for the assembly and entertainment space, pretty much our standard conditions. We have put hours of operation limits from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., and any associated cleanup ceasing by midnight for the assembly use. And then for the conditional use for the sales and consumption of alcohol, of note, I'll point out, these mostly are standard conditions, but I'll point out just kind of a little bit of information, that that consumption will be limited to, sales and consumption will be limited to within the designated area within the existing building, as well as the outdoor patio space only. So, again, we did hours of operation, same as for the assembly use. Sound is subject, so any amplified sound, et cetera, would be subject to Chapter 42 of the municipal code, so they'd have to get the appropriate license, or, excuse me, permits for those uses. And I believe, in this case, they are limited to no amplified music? Is that correct? No outside amplified music, so...
And where is that mentioned?
It would be in Chapter 42.
So 42 says by itself, no amplified music.
My condition says that, I'm sorry.
Where is that at?
I thought that was under 42. I believe that's under 42, which is why we were at the condition that particular way.
We've had times in the past, and I don't want to get in front of your cart here, but we've had times in the past where we've made that a condition. Has the ordinance changed sufficiently where that's taken care of by itself with Section 42, if it is, or Chapter 42? Gary?
Believe Gary's good.
If you want to.
Yeah, I'm gonna look at it to specifically answer that question while you guys continue your discussion.
Thank you.
I believe, that's my understanding, though.
Okay.
Chair.
All right. What else do we have related to your presentation here?
And then, we have a summary of the neighborhood meeting from the appellant. And let me zoom in a little bit, since that's a bit small. So they held their meeting. I'll just kind of scroll through this. If it goes too fast, give me the nod.
Okay.
And then, we've got the consent map. As you can see, we had some opposition to the north. We had some support from the west. We did receive a card late last night in support from Drew Kelso of the Slowdown Cafe. I believe, actually, I can't remember which building they're in right now. One of these buildings, I believe, over here. And we also received, Michelle, could you switch to the camera, please?
And while she's doing that, Michelle Wall is our AV magic person here. Sorry, I didn't give you credit in our opening statement.
The document camera. There we go. So we did receive this card this morning, so it's not included in my presentation, but I wanted to show that with you on the document camera, and if we could switch back to the presentation. We can go through the rest of the cards that we did receive. We did have to notice this twice, so you might see a few repeats.
And what was the reasoning for a second notice?
The second notice was due to, the first notice didn't include the parking lot parcel, so...
Right, so you know, there are two individual parcels, it's one proposal, so the radius is based on the...
On the...
The radius of the combined parcels, right?
Yes, and so that included an increased notification area.
Great.
I'll zoom in on this one.
Okay.
Oops.
Thank you.
This is the email we received yesterday evening, and so it did not make it on the map at that time.
Okay. Okay.
And that concludes my presentation. If you have questions for staff, I'd be happy to answer them.
Sure. I think I'll start with, Gary had a follow-up on our questions about how we address amplified music in the code.
So I don't find a provision in Chapter 42 that flat-out prohibits amplified music or sound outdoors. However, it would, there are limits on the sound level at the real property boundary.
Right.
So no sound amplified or unamplified could exceed those limits at the real property boundary.
Okay. So it might be up in the air, depending on what discussion is and what the appellant gives us for their plan of operation, if we wanted to further explore that with some limitations?
We could certainly look into that. I think, I mean, so as I read it, and I welcome any correction from our enforcement officer, as I read it, I think the limit would be 65 decibels at the boundary, which...
Regardless of source of the audio.
Exactly. And I don't know, maybe Chris has a, give us some examples of what that would be in terms of volume level.
Yep.
Chair, members of the board, Chris Hiles Cove, zoning enforcement officer. Gary's correct, it is 65 decibels, and it could only be operated amplified sound during normal business hours. No live music is allowed on the outdoor space there. That's something we would work closely with our police department and sound readings at the nearest receiving sound residential area.
So you mentioned 65 decibels of the private line, but you even just mentioned the word amplified.
Yes.
In which regard? It's not allowed under Section 42 amplified?
Section 42 would allow amplified background music, 65...
But under...
Yes, 65 decibels is pretty quiet, a little bit more than a normal conversation.
Got it. Okay. I think for the moment, that's clear enough for me. Thank you all. Okay, so, before we get to the applicant themselves, any other questions for Katherine?
I have a question.
Yes.
You know, I don't know that I've heard the term "assembly and entertainment small" before. Maybe all the rest of you have, but what does that really entail?
Is "small" the key word? Because I...
Well, maybe...
Yeah, I kind of remember "assembly, entertainment use," but I don't remember "small."
We just have definitions that are based on, you're pushing my knowledge of the definitions, my memory of the definitions, but they're based, I believe, on the occupancy loads. And actually, the, if you recall from last month, the Event Center/Church on the northeast side was also considered a "assembly and entertainment small use," so...
What does "small" mean? I might have missed it. Are we talking a certain square footage or number of people?
Less than 2,000.
Oh, that's small, huh?
Oh, wow. Less than 2,000?
So Hoyt Sherman Place is small, huh?
And you have to remember, too, buildings have occupancy loads as well, so...
Yeah, okay.
The building occupancy load would also restrict how many people could be present.
And again, I don't want to go down the rabbit hole here, but how does that work then with outdoor areas where people can assemble? Do you just factor the indoor area, and that's the maximum occupancy?
That's...
Or can they add in the outdoor area?
That's part of the building code side of things, so you're pushing my...
Okay, that's okay. I think that's a good enough answer for now.
So, they'd still have to follow building code as well as zoning code.
And Katherine, I understand where this location is. I think it's, you know, architecturally, it's a famous former dry cleaner location with the neat angel statues and all. It's considered one kind of property per se with two parcels here. There's been no draft site plan filed or anything here, has there, for this? I see we have some drawings, but my question goes to, I don't know that I see the full property boundary here, or it's not clear to me where the property boundary is. Well, I have that, that's thanks to the county assessor, but the applicant themselves showing the site. I'm unclear where the parking lot starts and stops, where the patio starts and stops, and where the whole property is as a whole here. Can you help me with that?
We do require just a site sketch for zoning board of adjustment applications, and then, I believe, the vast majority, other than the parking lot, has been interior-only work, and so...
So where it says seating and consumption there in kind of the upper center, that's indoor. Then the green dedicated service area, little rectangle, is that like an outside bar?
I think you'll have to ask the appellant that question.
Okay. And then I see green space. I don't know if that's the line, if that, what that means, and then apparently, we have a parking lot.
Again, I think the appellant's the proper person to provide you with that information, but again, I can show you the site photo I took last week, and I believe they're referring to the green space that you can see here, that eventually is meant to be the patio space.
Okay. And then parking lot to the right of that, and then behind the little quote "units," that's the neighboring house to the north, correct?
Correct. That is a residential property.
Okay. All right. Anything else for Catherine? Okay. Well, let's turn it over to the applicant or their representative. And just for order of the hearing, they've got 10 minutes. And we just need you to start by giving your name and address as appropriate.
Hey, good afternoon. My name is Josh Law. I'm here about 413 Euclid, commonly known as the French Way Building. Thanks for having me today.
And where is your office or residence as appropriate?
410 Allen Place is my home residence.
In Des Moines?
In Des Moines.
Okay. Okay. Not everybody that's in front of us lives in Des Moines. Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah. First, I just want to kind of give a general vision of the intended use of the space. And then I do have some prepared remarks, which I believe they're handing to you guys. And I'll put those up timely as well when I start from there. So I've been a event industry professional for 20 years. And I've always thought, I don't want to be moving speakers when I'm 70. What's the next move? I want to do an event space. So I've primarily been involved with weddings, and that's what I intend to do at the space if all things are going according to plan. Friday night and Saturday night, we're both... We're having a wedding on both of those nights. And then other times during the week, and if I'm not booked for weddings, I would also be doing community-focused events of all different makes and types. We could be doing things like a comedy show, a yoga class, you know, religious proceedings, and, you know, anything that we could be available for that we would offer the space to be used to different people for all sorts of different uses. I don't necessarily want to pigeonhole and say, "We're only going to do weddings, and we're only going to do XYZ types of events." But as far as the zoning is concerned, we're in the MX district, and the assembly "small" is, I believe, the appropriate category. And from what I understand, the variance for service of alcohol is a bit more of a formality, like it's... There's not requirements, per se, that we need to meet. And if I understand that incorrectly, please let me know, but...
I don't think you're here for a variance. Was that the word you used?
Yes.
I think you're here for just a conditional use request.
Conditional use, yes.
Yes. Okay.
Correct. So anyway, that's the purpose of why I'm here and what I envision for the space. So keeping that all in mind, I'll start with my prepared remarks. Can we turn this on so people can see? My name is Josh Law. I'm here to respect... Respectfully request a zoning conditional use, I guess. That would allow me to serve alcohol on the premises at 413 Euclid in Highland Park, which will be operating as Chandelier, which is an upscale wedding and event center. I occupy roughly 65% of the building, with the other portion of the building being Calon Bridal, who provides bridal gowns and accessories. Appreciate the opportunity to address you and briefly share my extensive background of over 20 years in entertainment, food, and the beverage industry. My background demonstrates deep industry knowledge and provides the basis of why Chandelier will be operated successfully and responsibly, such that it will become a highly valued asset to the Highland Park Business District and the neighborhood. I founded a company specializing in providing private event bartenders and wedding DJs for 16 years in Chicago, the last five or six of those years here in Des Moines, where we executed over 60 events per year. Prior to this, I managed cocktail lounges, served in restaurants, worked as security in nightclubs, tended bars and dance clubs, and assisted with the launch of a successful bar in rural North Dakota, the Lewis and Clark. These experiences have honed my various entertainment and food and beverage skills and deepened my commitment to delivering exceptional service and fostering community engagement while operating with ethical business practices. I'm fully committed to operating my business responsibly and in harmony with our community's interests. I understand the concerns behind the proposed operational limitations and would like to address three of those specific points thoughtfully here. One, and I'll note during her presentation, she referred to what I said would be my common hours of operations. If you imagine a wedding, 4:00 p.m. to 11:00 o'clock, that's the common usage. That's not what I would say my restricted hours would be if someone wanted to have a wedding at noon. Who am I to say? You can't do that. So you proposed an 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. limited timeframe. And while I acknowledge the importance of maintaining peace and order, I believe the proposed limitation of 8:00 to 11:00 to be unnecessarily restrictive. Events such as after-prom parties or New Year's Eve celebrations can extend often beyond those hours and can be managed responsibly without causing undue disturbance. I propose a reasonable compromise that allows for normal operations from 8:00 a.m. until midnight for all events. And then any event that serves alcohol after midnight to be requiring a dedicated security officer. Just going ahead and putting that forward as something that I think we could do. Number two, outdoor amplified sound. Proposed no outdoor amplified audio, as was kind of clarified before I started presenting here. My research said that that's not strictly in the code. Limiting outdoor amplified sound would significantly impact my intention to use the outdoor green space for wedding ceremonies and other similarly culturally significant events. I proposed adhering to city noise ordinance guidelines with a maximum limit of 65 dBa at the property line during daytime hours and 50 dBa after 10:00 p.m., which aligns with the existing standards. And ensures that we respect our neighbors' peace while accommodating important community gatherings. And again, 65 dBa is roughly the sound of a clear conversation between two individuals. So, you know, just gauging by ear, if you have a conversation and the music is lower than your conversation, it's likely that it's under 65. But since my background is in music and AV, I will have people on site who will have access to a meter to gauge those sorts of things. And in addition, I understand if any authorities need to measure occasionally as well. And I also just want to put in your imagination, if we're using that outside green space to have a wedding ceremony, it would be highly unusual to not have the pastor, the officiant, or anyone like that to be amplified for those purposes. Also, if you're having an outdoor ceremony with 100 to 150 guests, a string quartet, common and traditional to many wedding envisions, how you envision a wedding going, that would be impossible as well if we weren't able to do amplified sound. So I think that to be, you know, for the purpose of the building, I think that's overly burdensome. And I think that most of those activities would happen before our 10:00 p.m. lowered decibel limit. And so I just ask that you would take that into consideration and just allow us to follow the ordinance as measured rather than restricting amplification. Number three, trash removal. Proposed here is daily removal. As you can imagine, if we were a restaurant and we were serving seven days of the week, we would have staff on site every day of the week. That would be an easy thing to accommodate for. For many events, we would be looking at often weeks where Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, there's no events, and therefore, there might not be people staffed on site. So I'm basically requesting that that changes to once a week minimum. I'm committed to maintaining a clean and welcoming environment for our patrons and neighbors. Daily trash removal requirement, as written, would be overly burdensome, especially on weekdays where events are less frequent and staff may not be scheduled on site. I'm proposing a compromise of weekly trash removal, which would be supplemented by our proactive measures to keep the premises clean before and after events, which is common in the operations of these sorts of establishments. The other requirements, outdoor lighting, requiring a liquor license, construction compliance, and posted contact information are all acceptable as written. I don't see any issues with those as they're written here. In conclusion, I'm eager to demonstrate my dedication to being a responsible member of the community. I'm committed to working closely with authorities, business groups, and individual residents to ensure that Chandelier operates smoothly and harmoniously in Highland Park. And I kindly request your thoughtful consideration of these proposed adjustments to the limitations, which will allow me to contribute positively to our community while maintaining high standards of operation and enabling memorable events and programs for... And enabling memorable events and programs possible for varied individuals, groups, and organizations. Thank you for considering my requests. If there's any time remaining, I don't know if I can reserve it. We're down the line, but...
You've got 52 seconds.
Yep. Take it back. You can have it.
Any questions for Josh?
I have a question. Would you be having a dumpster on the premises, then, if you're requesting the once a week?
Yes. Could we turn this screen back on? Michelle? Could we turn this screen back on? And I'll jump through here.
And what would you... Yeah. Is that what you want to show?
Yep. So this section here that's got cement and pillars, that's the dedicated trash receptacle space.
And is that going to stay where it's at? And then your patio goes, in essence, behind it from this view?
Yeah. So the patio would be a small outcropping from where this building kind of turns.
And when you say a small outcropping, how many square feet would it be?
We requested a larger amount, 2,800 square feet as a maximum.
Sure.
We haven't landed on what exactly that would mean logistically, so...
So 2,800 square feet is more than 50 foot by 50 foot, but less than, I don't know, 60 foot by 50 foot, like 2,503,000 square feet?
Sure. Yeah.
Okay.
It's not particularly large, so to help... Well, I mean, when you're looking at putting 100 people to 200 people on it...
Well, and that may go to another point. Yeah, 2,800 square feet is, what, two single-family house floor plans? What's a single-family house? 1,400 square feet? Yeah.
So to just elucidate this image a little bit more, so this green... This green space that's out here...
Yeah, help us with that.
That's where the grass is. And it's between the parking lot on the far side where you saw those units.
Right.
And then the green space is in here. Somewhere I read that to have an outdoor area, you needed to have a dedicated service area. So that's why I identified this smaller green area as the dedicated service area.
So if you build your patio, you won't have that green space in between?
It would take a small bite out of the green space. Yeah. So this is the patio here as we envisioned it at one point. So we have an overhead door here, and the patio would allow people to egress from the building at a level surface. So we're thinking ADA compliance, no trip hazard. Walk out to the patio. And then in the green space is where we would generally have the ceremony, or, you know, people are playing bags, or, you know, whatever can happen in a yard can happen out in the green space.
Okay. Other questions for Josh? Okay. All right. Thank you for your presentation. We'll check back with you in a few minutes.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you. So the way the hearing works now, the appellant has presented their case. Now, is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak in support of the applicant's request? If you want to speak in support, you've got up to five minutes. Going once, going... Come on up. Price is right. I just need your name, address, and you've got five minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Alex Van Dorp. And my address is 3109 47th Street in Des Moines. My wife and I own Royal Flush Gaming. We're a casino party company. And we do about 30% of our businesses in the fundraiser space. This is pertinent a little bit later on. That amount is going to be about 40 events this year. I met Josh about three years ago when he walked up to my office door and tried to sell me a copy machine. So it went from... Our relationship went from a cold sales call to we got talking about music and DJ stuff and events, and we kind of found out what each other does. And we developed a good professional relationship, which has now blossomed into a solid friendship. I can consider Josh a true friend of mine. And as calm and as professional as you see him now, you should really see him at an event when he's DJing. He is the guy to go to. We are excited at Royal Flush. We're excited for this venue. If you haven't seen the building, you should check it out. It's such a great historic building. The renovation is just fantastic. We're excited because we want to be able to have a venue that we can recommend to our clients, especially the fundraiser clients. And a venue that's not only affordable, unlike some of the big hotels where you've got to spend six, seven, eight grand just to have your 50-person event, but it's also in the heart of our community. And I think that speaks a lot for what Josh has done in trying to get this project off the ground. I want to finish by pointing out that his plans don't include a nightclub or a bar. That's not the intended uses for this space. Well, violence and disorder can happen, impaired driving, it can happen anywhere in our metro. My wife and I don't feel that this venue proposed is going to promote either of these, any of these. And in fact, it's really upscaling the user demographic of the area. I think the usage, like he said, is going to be primarily for weddings. Hopefully, we can provide some fundraiser clients over there. Birthday parties, maybe bingo down the road, comedy club, yoga, exercise, maybe worship space and other community events. Thank you for my time. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Anybody else that wishes to speak in support of the applicant? Okay? Anybody that wishes to speak in opposition to the applicant's request? If you'd like to speak in opposition, come on up. No necessary order. Whoever raised their hand first? And within the procedure as we have it, yeah, just need your name, address, and you've got up to five minutes.
My name is Gary Fox. I own the apartment house at 3703 Fifth Avenue, which would be 50 feet north of where I believe they're planning on doing this, which is in the back of the building. Now, I have some... A lot of questions here. Evidently, what I just heard, that a bar is not going in there. Then this is off of the wedding... That's wedding dress shop that's been... That's renting there now. I'm a little confused about a lot of things. But one thing I really suggest is that there be a fence, a privacy fence of at least six and a half, seven feet and solid across the north side of the parking lot there. I have no idea. I heard something else. Somebody said this was rated to up to 2,000 people could be there. Is that correct?
It's a general category, and I usually don't answer questions from people that want to speak. It doesn't mean they'll be allowed to have 2,000 people there, no.
Okay. Well, I was going to say, I don't know where parking would be for that many people. We had the record shop and the little shopping center right to the west of there, across Fifth Avenue, were having 35 to 40 people a night. And they had music, and the police were called. One of the guys in the neighborhood was calling the police all the time about the noise, and they finally shut it down. I'm concerned to... You know, my tenants go to bed pretty easy, pretty early. And the other factor is, some of them work, and they got to get up in the morning. But I don't quite understand how you can limit this noise and how you can limit the amount of people that will be coming in there. But evidently, it is not a bar that's going in there. It's a wedding company that's going in there that's going to be putting these weddings on, and it's not going to be a basic bar, if I understand this to be. But I'm in opposition of it. I think that the big parking lot to the east, the church, they're talking about putting a chain fence across that parking lot. They were going to do that a year ago. They do not want them parking in that. That's a general word that's on the street out there. And this is a residential neighborhood, and it sounds to me like you're putting the Court Avenue situation right down into a residential neighborhood. That's about all, you know, I can say. But I really think there needs to be a fence around that parking lot to keep car lights coming and going. I got a parking... A little small parking there, lot there. And if I start finding people parking in that, we'll have the cars towed, and it'll be $450, $500 to have them removed or to get their cars back. to have them removed, or to get their cars back. So I'm in just, I don't know much more to say, but there'll be, if, if there is even 150 people out there, there'll be a lot of traffic down our alley. And there, you know, I've seen these situations where there's been alcohol and wine, liquor, and beer, and they seem to drop their cups all over the neighborhood. Well, they should be responsible for completely policing them up after every meeting. I think the neighborhood will be, get more trash in it. And it's, I'm not, I don't think it's going to be a good idea.
All right. We appreciate you coming down today to share your comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else that wishes to speak in opposition to the applicant's request? Going once, going twice. All right. I have to say, is there anybody who wishes to speak in neutrality? All that means, it needs to be related to the issue at hand. Maybe you're not for it, maybe you're not against it, but anything you'd like to share that maybe could help us with our evaluation? Anybody from Switzerland? Okay. Seeing none. Do we have any further questions for staff? Right. I'll do it. Okay. 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 Yeah. Josh, I got a question for you, if you don't mind coming back up here. So, you know, the staff recommendation is, let's see, what? Events are over by 11:00 PM. Cleanup is done by midnight. You're basically saying, well, we'd like to keep the whole thing open to midnight, and maybe even some stuff after that, depending on what's going on.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So generally speaking, you know, if you're not agreeable to the staff recommendation, a lot of times, we can't sit here and decide when you can quit selling alcohol based on some things in Iowa code. So if you're not agreeable to the staff operational hours, it might be up to this board to say, well, if you don't agree to that, we might have to say no. I'm not drawing that line in the sand completely, but a lot of times, that's already been discussed. You know, staff usually shares the recommendations with you ahead of time. Is this a make or break deal for you? That, you know, the staff recommendations, there's just no way I can make this work with their hours?
It's not make or break. So as I said in my original filing that she referred to, the most common timeframes for weddings in, in Des Moines and Iowa is from 4:00 to 11:00. If someone says, hey, I want to go until midnight, I don't think that's terribly unreasonable. It might happen five, 10 times a year. It's not quite as common. I would like to make that available without needing to, you know, hey, you know, I get a call on Thursday, hey, we want to go until midnight instead of 11:00. Is that possible? I don't want to have to, like, come to the city and, and request special permission to do those sorts of things. And that's why, you know, I proposed anything that happens after midnight where alcohol is served, then we would have a dedicated security officer. I felt that was a, a pretty good, you know, way to do, go about that responsibly.
Right. Okay. I got you. Okay. So since you're up here, we, we had some comments in opposition. I can give you, like, three minutes for rebuttal. So you kind of get the last say. You have anything you'd like to add for closing comments?
Sure. Yeah, I'll just address Mr. Fox's points directly. It's true that it's not going to be a bar. It's a very different vibe of a venue for, for that. So I, I know there was some confusion that there was a, a bar and a brewery that was supposed to go in, and that was probably combined with what I'm doing here, but, but that's not the case. For parking, we do meet the requirements in the back for our square footage and capacity. And I'll just mention, our capacity for the front room should be around 100 to 150, and the capacity for the back room should be around 200 to 250, depending on what the fire marshal says. So maximum, we're looking at 300, 350 people if we have a full house, significantly less than 2,000.
Okay.
Car lights into the neighborhood. We do plan on erecting a fence around the parking in the back that would both correct for sound, and it would correct for lights going into the neighborhood. And lastly, as far as my food and beverages experience is concerned, we're not going to have any cups leaving the building. That's just illegal. So we wouldn't be contributing that particular thing. But I do know that, you know, guests do what guests are going to do, and sometimes it's good and sometimes it's bad, and it will be part of our regular maintenance of the facility, the building, the space, and the community to be on cleanup duty, especially bracketing the events themselves, but also through the week in, in normal course of business.
Okay. All right. Excellent. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And Josh, since you didn't take advantage of all of your time, and I didn't ask Chris Howes, COVID zoning enforcement officer, if he had any comments, I'm going to have him come up. And then if he adds anything that you'd like to respond to, I'll let you do that briefly. Chris?
Yeah. Chair members of the board. Just wanted to clarify real quick on the capacity of that building will be, Gary mentioned this, will be regulated by our building code for both the patio and the interior of the space. It's not going to hold 2,000 people, just to clarify that question.
Sure.
There's some limitations. I'm not a building code expert, but I've, I've been through enough permitting issues that it'll be regulated, so it's, it can be operated safely within the guidelines of the fire department and, and the IVC. In regards to the fence question, on the approved site plan, there is a note there of 100% opacity fence on that north edge of the property. Just wanted to bring that up. That's more of a Chapter 135 issue, which this board doesn't, doesn't pertain to the board, but it was brought up in, in the question. So there is, I believe, a buffer requirement between this development and the surrounding neighborhood.
And since you mentioned it, did we see that approved site plan? Was that presented here at all with anybody's background?
I think pretty much just the applicant's information was. But I was kind of thumbing through what, what it's been submitted with our, on the 135 side. Maybe that's why we, we aren't in the, you know, the view of it.
Roll it out?
Yep.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
Any other questions?
All right. Thank you. No. Yeah. Any questions for Chris? Nope. All right. Josh, you don't have to say anything if you don't, but if you want to, based on Chris's comments, anything else you want to add?
Oh, I, I believe in the last week or two, we've had the site plans approved, so they do include a fence. So I think we're good.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So with testimony and questions, we'll go ahead and close the public portion and go to board deliberation. So board members, it's now our turn. And we have our seventh board member. I'll introduce him here in a minute, but we'll go ahead and wrap up this item. Find your nameplate. All right. Okay. I'm going to confer with our attorney. Okay. Mr. Saw, we're going to have you just be an observer on this one, since we're going to the board deliberation. Okay. So board members who were present for the hearing on this one, that's six of us. Any initial thoughts?
I have a thought. I'm confused a little bit about, are we, are we going to talk about the staff recommendations, or are we talking about what Mr. Law is asking for?
Well, good question. Staff is recommending approval with certain conditions as an essence to guarantee what their interest is in allowing it to occur. He's provided some other things. If you have, you know, positive interests, like, I don't think these conditions are necessary, or maybe you feel, gee, I don't like these conditions, I don't think they're protective, that's what we're here to discuss. So, so it's a little of both, actually. And staff, no question to you, but can you put the actual picture, the aerial photo back up there that shows the property? And the vicinity of the parcels and how they relate? I always like to go back to that as the final thing. So, okay. So, anybody else here?
I just have a comment. I, I think it's great that something like this is going to be used, and Highland Park is one of the Invest DSM neighborhoods, of course. I am comfortable with the staff recommendations.
Okay. Other thoughts? Rhonda?
I'm excited to have something like this in the neighborhood around there. I think it would be nice to bring in something, it's not going to be a constant, everyday thing, but it would be, and all the other stuff that could go on, it's not like it's loud music. It's, I mean, I'm hearing so many other things that it can be used for. So that building has been sitting empty for a while. I just feel like it's, and it's, it's a nice building. I used to use it.
Yes.
So I just feel like it would be a pleasant thing for the community to have that. As long as there's not, you know, the light, and he's got everything figured out for the lights in the back of the parking lot and that kind of stuff for the buildings. Because I kept thinking, well, if that was my backyard, I would feel the same way. But if they've got something already, you know, to soundproof type of thing, the wall or the, the fence, then I would be okay with it.
I agree with Rhonda and Marlis.
Correct. Cool. I think I'll just go ahead and throw it out here. We'll just keep rotating here. Now, if people don't want to say anything, they don't have to, but I want to use here, too. I think the use of the building for a venue of what's been described, we've had some others in the neighborhood, we've had some in the Drake neighborhood like this, I'm fine with that. Where I do get a little more concerned, and whether it was by design or default, a lot of time was spent on discussing the outdoor activities that are planned here. Outdoor weddings, outdoor four-string quartets or bands, gee, I'm going to need amplified music. But oh, yes, I'll stay within the 65 decibels. I'm sure that's the intent. But when I look at this map here, I see one, two, three, four, five, six houses directly in that radius, use the Doppler effect, whatever you want, a sound radius, sound moves outward, going to move right at those six houses to the north. The buildings are to the south. Even if the sound's directed at the buildings, they hit the buildings, they bounce back north. I'm just concerned that we've got some pretty intensive activities in an outdoor area of up to 2,800 square feet. And I don't feel there's sufficient separation from other uses, especially residential uses, where this would not be a detrimental impact, even if we stayed within the 65 decibels. That kind of outdoor assembly, I think that's, that's pretty large for me. If somebody said, well, we're just going to have a little patio where people can go out and smoke, and it's, you know, 20 by 25, but, you know, this is an indoor venue primarily. I understand the idea of what people want to have, but I'm just very concerned about the, the, the impact that this would have in that surrounding area, even if it was 8, 9 o'clock at night. Those are just a few of my comments. Anybody else? So if I was to support this, it would probably be a more limited, that, you know, patio area would need to be smaller or not have amplified music. But there's six of us here, so. Dave?
So you're okay with no amplified music outside?
I think that I would be.
Okay. Because, I mean, it is obviously close to these houses, and that, but here again, and we had one of these last month, we've had several of these. If he's in violation of any of this stuff, this can come back.
This is true.
And we can pull everything. And he's got a major investment here, so I think, and he sounds like a pretty solid operator. So, you know, I, I think that knowing what the expectation is and then following the rules is something that, it's in his best interest to do that.
That's a very good point.
So I'm, I'm kind of comfortable with giving people the, the opportunity to follow the rules. And if they can't, then so be it.
Okay. Other thoughts and/or a motion?
And I'd, and I'd be okay, too, if we want to extend the hours to midnight, and maybe that's just on Fridays and Saturdays only. And with no outdoor amplified music, I don't see that there's going to be that big of a, potentially a nuisance or a disturbance, whatever you want to call it. And certainly for an event like that, or an event, venue like that, I think 11 is pretty restrictive. And I, I don't, and I think we've got, we've given to midnight to the other venues that we've done. So that would be one.
But I might also contend those, those other venues might not have had six houses directly abutting to the north.
Oh, I think one of them has houses closer than that.
Yeah. And again, I try to base my decisions not just on, well, we did this on this, the setting and what I see here. But generally speaking, yes. I, I understand what you're getting at, that, yes, we place conditions, it's their job not to screw up. You get a driver's license, don't screw up, you'll get it taken away. That's expensive. But I also want to make sure I'm trying to get people kicked off on the right foot so we don't run into a, you know, huge pothole instantly.
Right. And, and this is, this is pretty similar to Willow, really, where the location, if you, it's relevant to, there's some commercial around it as well as some residential.
Sure.
So I, I'm, and we have had zero issues with that. So I'm, I'm just trying to be consistent, but I'm also trying to be realistic. Somebody that's trying to get a business off the ground, it'd be a great, it'd be nice to see this building get used.
Yes.
And this neighborhood is certainly trying to reinvent itself. So.
And when I mentioned I supported with the condition, with the, with the items here.
Yep.
One of the reasons was because I think 11 o'clock is a good idea with the neighbors.
Okay. So Gary, I might need to ask you to maybe help us with a more clear statement than I'm able to make. Since this is still related to alcohol sales, and we want to put some hour limitations in potentially, you know, which way can that pendulum swing where we don't get in arrears of Iowa code?
It, it sounds, it, it sounds like this is a situation where the members may be disinclined to grant this conditional use without some guardrails to protect the health, safety, and general welfare of persons residing in the adjoining or surrounding residential areas. It sounds like the applicant was agreeable, it's, it, it sounded to me that the applicant was more amenable to having those limitations in place than to have it denied altogether. So under those circumstances, I think if the board wishes to, to retain the, the conditions regarding the hours of operation for the event space, I think that those, that, under all of the circumstances, that would be reasonable.
But he's asked for later hours. Some of the board members maybe have said, we'd be fine with later hours if I am reading my colleagues. So.
Yeah. So my, my response would be that there's, there's not a legal distinction between 11 and 12.
Right.
So if, if the board wants to do it at 11 or, or 12.
Right.
There's not a legal distinction between those two.
And just in my own mind, if, if anything, the pendulum would swing to the benefit of the applicant with our decision versus.
That's what it sounds like.
Versus being more draconian than, you know, the law's like, well, you can't limit them further. Okay?
Yep.
Does that make sense to you guys? Okay. All right. So again, we have a little more discussion, or if some board members feel like they've got something they'd like to coalesce here into a motion with any conditions or accepting the conditions as they are, or amending them, this is where you put on your thinking hat, so we get a motion on the table. Put you to work.
Here again, I'll just say, I don't, I don't think that there's a, an issue with. It is. I don't think there's an issue with midnight being the hours if we have no outdoor music.
And if you want to turn that into a motion to move that forward.
I would just, I would suggest, you know, because I think Marlis wants to make a motion, I'd just say that would be a friendly amendment that I'd offer up for consideration. Now, I'm, I'm not going to shoot this thing down just because of that. So my cards are face up.
Now I'm supposed to make the motion?
No. I, I'm just saying if you'd consider that.
Yeah.
I wouldn't consider going to midnight, but I would consider making a motion along with what the staff recommendation is.
Okay. Just as it is.
As it is.
Just as it is. And that's fine. All right. So is that an official motion then?
That is.
All right. So we've got a motion to approve staff rec with staff conditions as provided on the agenda, with no amendments. Would there be a second to Marlis's motion for that?
Well, there you go.
All right. So if Marlis makes a motion to approve staff rec for the conditional use, Tom seconds. All those in favor, raise your right hand and say aye. One, two, three. Four. Okay. All right. Five. Right? Dave, did you have your hand up? Okay. All right. So that motion carry, or, and then those against, and I'm just going to say nay, just kind of a principle thing. Cars over the top of the hill, you're running. All right. So that motion carries five to one. So you're approved for the use subject to the staff recommendation as presented. So that will conclude this item. So again, if you were here for item one. So again, if you were here for item one, we've completed our hearing item on that, you're welcome to leave the hearing, you can stick around for further education and entertainment if you'd like to hear our other two items. We'll let everybody just get adjusted here a bit and then we'll move on in a moment. And I think what I will do here is take a moment to introduce our newest member of the zoning board of adjustment, Mr. Kuku Sa. And we have seven members here, so there is one member from each ward of the city that is appointed by the ward council person. Two of the members are appointed by each of the two at-large members, and one person is appointed by the mayor. So Mr. Sa has been appointed by Josh Mandelbaum from Ward Three, if I'm correct. And Kuku's a small business owner, lives in his ward, right? And very active in arts and culture in Des Moines, serves on a number of organizations, so very dedicated to the community, so bravo for your work. And want to welcome him to the board. Our past board member from Ward Three had served with us for some time, Justin Gross, but he took a position as a magistrate judge, so decided a citizen semi-judicial role probably wasn't in his best interest. So we welcome you to the board, and you can jump right in with our next item that's up for bid. So I'm going to have staff present to us here and give us a little background on our next item, which is item two, a conditional use request in the vicinity of 200 East Court. And I'm going to step out for just a moment, I'll be back, but continue on with your.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the board. I want to present to you item two, which is in the vicinity of 200 East Court Avenue. The applicant, Revue Parking LLC, is proposing redevelopment of a 36,960 square foot area to be used for a parking lot covered by solar power equipment comprising a utility. The appeals proposed are conditional use for a non-accessory surface parking lot in a DX2 district and conditional use for a major, for a utility major use in a DX2 district. And I'm going to go ahead and work through some slides to set the context, identify what area is, what, what it's existing, what's surrounding it. So first I will go to the screen here, aerial view. So the property is, what you can see, the, there's three parcels and then an alley segment that make up the combined properties. And so here is a zoomed-out view of the three properties. Once, once again, you can see two parking lots and the, the building that is vacant to date. I, I would like to note the, the very, what would be the, the intersection, well, this corner right here actually came before us, I want to say April of 2023, where the applicant, originally this parking lot was tied to the building to the north. However, the applicant had come to us because they were looking at separating the accessory parking lot from that previous use in anticipation of a much larger parking amenity that would service 110 East Court Avenue, which is the old federal court annex. And so the applicants are here in front of us today to propose the conversion of these three properties to a not-accessory parking lot with a, which would be covered with a major utility solar panels, which is anticipated to provide energy to serve approximately 100 homes in the Des Moines area. I'll continue to move. So here is the, the, what would be facing northeast across the property. I just took this last week, actually. And this, this one's more central to the site. And then here is, this is a view facing south, southwest. And here's more of a western view across the front of the property. And then this would be more of a northwestern view across the property. Here is the layout of the, the property as they are looking to combine and transform it from the two existing parking lots and the vacant building to the covered surface parking lot. They are proposing approximately 121 surface parking stalls and approximately four ADA, it's either four or five ADA accessible parking stalls with that as well. Now, the, the parking is intended to serve the building at 110 East Court Avenue from the hours of 6:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Outside of those hours, it would be available for public use. They are proposing to have a automated kiosk as part of that serving function. Here are some more views of the structure that they are putting over the top. They are intending to do a type of brick panel that would be complementary to existing structures in the area. And so, so some of the, the fencing features, as you could see. And so as I mentioned, the site is in a DX2 downtown district. The site is located on the north side of East Court Avenue in between East Second Street And so the, the solar utility station would be considered a, a utility major use. And so it's generating 0.08 megawatts of energy. The energy gained is going into, from the solar farm, is going back to Mid-American Energy, and as mentioned, it is going to serve other properties in the city of Des Moines. And so the parking structure is intended to mimic, mimic Arcade's style of parking. In the downtown DX2 district, it's intended for mid-level intensity of activity where storefronts, offices, residents are mixed. It is currently desecate, designated downtown mixed use, which allows for the mid, mixed use, high-density residential uses, and compact combination of pedestrian, retail offices, residential, and parking in the downtown area. And so the property itself, as mentioned, it would be, would help facilitate the redevelopment of the former federal courthouse located at 218 East Second Street.
You, you say would help assist with the redevelopment of that?
It would, it would provide some of the parking, so existing, the existing parking there today previously was utilized as a, one of, one of multitude of parking solutions for that property in the past. And so by reimagining it as a covered parking lot, it would still have some of that function. So as that becomes fully occupied, that would be one of the, their primary sources. And so staff does believe that the non-accessory surface parking lot and the major utility use are in keeping with the city's planning and design ordinance. We believe that so long as they are operated in tandem for the perpetuity of each use, they're complementary and would not have a significant detrimental impact on the use and enjoyment of adjoining properties. And so staff is supportive. Proposed location and operations would adequately safeguard the health, safety, and general, general welfare of persons residing in the area. Staff has recommended three conditions with this use. First condition is in, right there, any non-accessory parking, surface parking lot shall only be permitted in tandem with a utility major use that includes the construction, maintenance of solar power equipment comprising a utility station in general conformance with the submitted conceptual drawings. The second condition for is any non-accessory surface parking lot shall be available for public parking, either paid or unpaid, at minimum between the hours of 5:00 p.m. and 6:00, 6:00 a.m. each day. Any construction on the site shall be in accordance with applicable site plan regulations, building fire code, with issuance of necessary electrical and building permits by the permit development center. And then with any conditional use, if the zoning enforcement officer determines at any time the operation of either uses become a nuisance or exhibits a pattern of violating these conditions, that the zoning enforcement officer may apply to the board to have it And so we did send out comment cards, we, we received several responses, and, well, we, we did receive a few responses in support of the project. We did not receive any in opposition. And that is my presentation. Do you have any comments for staff?
Yeah, questions? Go ahead.
Or questions.
Are you familiar with any other parking lots that are covered by solar panels in the city?
There, there is one parking lot. I don't know that it would be visible in the diagram. I'll, I'll look real quick. It's One Market, and it is around the corner. I believe it's on East Fourth, and, oh, yeah, I want to say it's, it's further, if you were to go south, and actually, I think it's on this street further south.
Is that the old Rumley building, if I got the name right, or?
Uh, right across the street from.
Yeah.
I believe it is. Yep. And so there is a surface parking lot there that is covered with full solar. I want to say that was done, don't quote me on this, I want to say around 2012-ish somewhere.
Okay. Interesting.
Other questions for Frank? Okay. Thank you for a good presentation, much appreciated. All right. Applicant or their representative, come on down, tell us about your project. And you've got up to 10 minutes, we just need you to start with your name and address. And if someone else intends to speak during the same time, you've got 10 minutes, you can share it how you want, but we just need both your names.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Ritchie. My address is 2200 Grand Avenue in Des Moines.
I'm Doug Wells. We're with the same architectural firm, and I'm also the owner of the courthouse annex at 110 East Court and additional land we're to talk about today.
Yeah, and if you have anything you want to show, you can lay it under the camera and we'll have staff kind of turn the, turn the camera on, if that might be helpful for you.
Yeah, can we do that, please?
Can you guys swap the view there so that'll show up? There we go. Thank you.
So as Frank stated, we are intending to have 121 covered parking spaces. Sorry, can you guys hear me?
We got you. Yeah, yeah.
There would be five accessible parking spaces as well as necessary by code, one of which would be a van accessible parking unit as well. The parking spaces are intended to serve the building at 110 East Court, specifically the third and fourth floor tenants that will be there. Here's a 3D view of what that parking, covered parking would look like. As we were trying to say before, the facade we were intending to make is supposed to relate to the building at 110 East Court, to kind of show that they relate to one another. And the red brick that is shown here is to relate to the rest of the buildings around, so it's kind of tying both of them into the neighborhood and not being a giant random parking spot and kind of integrating it a little bit more. And then showing again the elevation where we have brick as well as fencing, and then where there isn't any fencing, it would be intended that those would be surface-level entrances into the parking, so people who use wheelchairs or have difficulty walking can access the parking from the street or from the sidewalk when they're using it after the hour of 5:00 p.m. We are, we did read the conditions from the city, and we do not have a problem with any of them.
As Elizabeth said, the conditions are just fine with us, and we had a nice dialogue with the staff putting the presentation together.
Great. Excellent. All right. Any questions for Elizabeth or Doug from the board? Okay. All right. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Anybody to speak in support of the applicant's request? Anybody in support? All right. Anybody in opposition? Come on down. And we just need your name, address, and you've got five minutes to provide your comments.
Hi, my name is Carol Maher. I live at 604 Locust Street, apartment 1605 downtown in the Equitable Building, where we just celebrated our 100th year. For the first 75 years, it was built as an office building, and guess what? No dedicated parking. The last 25 years, it's been housing rentals. Again, no dedicated parking. So now we're using, reusing an old building, I don't know how old it is, that had no dedicated parking, yet we're providing dedicated parking. Downtown has boatloads of parking. Boatloads. More than, more than will probably ever be parked by the people that work downtown and live downtown. We need to reuse, we need to put cars in those spots that already exist. I visited this site on my bike ride over here today, and if you could pull up the, that'd be great. And within sight of the, here, right here. Oops. Did I do something wrong? Okay. Right here, this building. Right here, this building. That's a parking garage that's within view, a couple of blocks north of the parking garage that you're, the propping lot you're proposed to approve today. You can't really see it there, but there's available spaces, just from two blocks away, you can see there's available spaces in that lot, that parking garage that can be used for people to park in. A hundred years ago, we didn't build all this parking. It's a recent thing, right? We encourage people to drive everywhere. And if you've been paying attention to city council this past week, you've noticed that we, we have what some people call a crisis, but all these homeless people around with nowhere to live. We need places for people, not cars, especially downtown, where I live, where we want people to walk around and ride their bike and not have multiple curb cuts coming out of a parking lot to support people coming in from Ankeny. We need to encourage people to use other modes of transportation and park in the lots and spaces that we already have. We should not be encouraging more parking inventory in our downtown neighborhood. As Frank said, DX2, the X to tip you off, is mixed, mixed use, not mono use. Not mono use that's greenwashed with solar panels. The reason you have mixed use, right, is so you can spread your risk around, right? If the commercial is down, residential is up, and vice versa, or office is up, commercial's down, you have your risk spread out. This, that's one of the reasons for a mixed use zoning, which again was read as high-density residential, pedestrian-oriented retail with activation on the ground floor. This does none of that. This provides places for cars to park, not people to live. And if you look at the parking lot that's proposed, there's no part, there's no islands that are required per code. I'm not sure how that would be approved. There's no circulation. It has four curb cuts to it. So you can't circulate within the parking lot. You have to come in and out. You're encouraging people to use all these curb cuts, which are unsafe for pedestrians and bicyclists. Every time there's a car coming across the sidewalk or across a place where a bike is going to be riding, it increases the risk to bicyclists and pedestrians. And while I love, 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 love solar panels, that's a beautiful thing. I don't like them on top of asphalt. I like them on top of native plantings. I like them on top of place, I like the solar panels to be used to gather rainwater, to be used to water the native plantings. And there's no bike racks provided in the place where we're building to put all these cars, not people. We should think of all modes of transportation and for the way that people get around when we're investing in our downtown with this valuable parcel that is going to be used for a very long time to put cars in rather than people. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down and your comments. Anybody else to speak in opposition? Okay. Anybody in neutrality? Okay. Seeing none, do we have any further questions for staff? I know that I have just one or two brief ones. Frank, would you maybe be able to help me with just one or two brief questions? You know, a comment was just made, well, about circulation and there's no ability, you know, you'd have to drive in and drive out, you can't in essence cut through. The layout and design of the parking spaces, do they meet what the city requires for parking lot circulation in this type of construction, to the best of your knowledge?
Sure. So one of the things that I'd like to be specific is in our review, we're reviewing the use itself.
Right.
And so as part of the conditions of approval, they have to go through a site plan review and approval process where
Yep.
all of that's going to be looked at, engineering, traffic, they're going to be looking at some of those circulation concerns. I, I don't know that I have the scale. I don't recall there being dimensions associated with the, the parking for me to examine if they meet the specific criteria, but that is anticipated that it would come under review for those things.
Right. So, and I appreciate that clarification. So we're looking at approving two conditional uses related to general use, how that use would be designed and constructed therein is up to site plan requirements. These were illustrations of the general, you know, within reason, this is kind of how it's going to look. But it's not up to us to be counting the parking spaces, determining if they're wide enough, all that stuff.
Correct.
Correct? Okay. Related to that, there's two appeals here, a conditional use for a non-accessory parking, surface parking lot in a DX2 district, and a utility major use in a DX2 district. Which is the primary use at this site with what's been proposed?
I, I would, I would say that, well, when we were looking at them, we were looking at them separately as, as functioning separately.
Okay. That's just a little bit of a thought provoking question here because, you know, is one a horse, is one the cart? Are they each 50/50? But if somebody wanted to propose a utility major use and just put solar panels in, within reasonable requirements for setback landscaping, design, fencing, whatever you require, we could just be approving a conditional use for solar panels. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And that wouldn't have changed the general type of utility major use request?
No, would not.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Frank? Yeah, go ahead, Cuckoo.
Frank, what is the, how is the need for additional parking been shown, especially for the building?
How is the need for the additional parking? When we were examining the property, we've taken into consideration, you know, what exists there today. And so part, part of that is looking at the two parking lots in the vacant building that are there. Each building outside DX2 district downtown does not have a minimum off-street parking requirement. So the, the need, if that building were located outside of the downtown, would be one parking stall per 400 square feet of office space. Now, your warehousing, those other types of uses, they would have a separate parking calculation, but because it's in the downtown district, parking is meeting off, off-street minimum parking saw requirement. It, it's, it's not there. So you're looking at parking garages, you're looking at on-street parking, you're looking at what exists today in terms of satisfying some of those criteria. The, the applicant, and, and they might speak more to this, but the applicant indicated that, you know, they're looking at repurposing the building as part of that. Some of this existing parking that's on the site that we're looking at today had been used to serve those folks and they're looking at picking that up again, but expanding it to the, to the vacant building premises and applying a major utility over the top of it. So I don't know.
Yeah. Good question.
Yeah.
So
One more question.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead. As many as you want.
As far as the, the power being generated, is there a cap, is there a maximum amount of power that can be generated?
Is there a maximum amount of power that can be generated?
And the, the reason I ask is just, is there a point at which there are safety concerns?
Safety concerns, we would generally look at, look to IBC and the electrical code for addressing those types of concerns. So they will have to go through a full review process to make sure that whatever they're proposing today and any modifications that they make in the future are meeting those set standards to be safe. And so it's not as though a new 500-watt panel comes out the end of the month, next, or comes out the end of next year, that they just swap them out. They would have to go through an electrical review process to submit those, as I understand it. It would be an alteration.
So Frank, I want to just come back around to some big picture thinking here. This is the MX2 district, was that correct?
DX2.
Or the DX2 district. So, yeah, mixed uses in a district. When people bring us a proposal, they say, this is what I would like to do here. And generally speaking, is it our job to look at, based on the proposal itself, do we see any concerns for undue impact to surrounding businesses, congestion, noise, light pollution, you know, the general stuff that's listed? But it's not up to this board to say, well, I think you should build something else here, or there's a greater need for this or that in the neighborhood. That's not up to us to suggest they should be doing other things, is it? Or if this isn't a question for you, Gary, could you?
Yeah, I'm happy to answer that because I think it does go to this board's authority and purview under chapter 134, as Frank has mentioned a couple of times. Chapter 134 is regarding the regulation of the use of the land and whether, whether the use, the proposed use fits in accordance with the existing zoning ordinance and the city's comprehensive plan more, more generally. Whether an individual property owner may, may want to use the property for something, or if there might be a better use for the property in someone's opinion, it's really outside of the purview of this board. This board is directed to look at specifically when, when dealing with conditional use permits, like this one and the last one that we saw. And those are, this board's purview is to look at, at the factors that are laid out in the staff report, you know. Is the, is the proposed use, are the conditions adequately safeguarding the health, safety, and welfare of persons residing or working and or enjoying the property? So to Mr. Saw's question, you know, if there was a safety issue, that type of thing may be within this board's purview, but, but that would only be based on the evidence that's presented during the course of this hearing. And then again, you know, the other factors that this board would consider are the, is there an impairment of adequate light and air? Is it going to increase congestion? You know, those, I don't need to go through all of them, but those are really the, kind of the factors that this board is focused on, not whether we would like or not like to see a different use. So, so really the inquiry is focused on whether the applicant has shown and satisfied these specific issues. And if there are concerns with those specific issues, then those would fall within the purview of this board.
Thank you for helping me with that one. Other questions for staff? Okay. All right. Thank you, Frank. So applicant, Chris, anything you want to add? Okay, cool. Thank you. So applicant, since there was a comment of some concern or opposition, you can do a three-minute rebuttal or closing comments if you so choose to. You don't have to take advantage of that, but if you want, come on back up and we'll let you close out the discussion before we go to board deliberation.
Thank you. So kind of a global picture of the, of the project. So the, I appreciate the interest from the citizens and the comments. In our current, we have a letter of intent on the lease of the building. Our building's a fully mixed-use situation. It's about 109,000 square feet. The first level, I'm talking about the 110 East Court now and kind of going to talk about everything together. 110 East Court on the first floor, we have a coffee shop, a small boutique restaurant, a exercise facility, a very nice restaurant with outdoor space, with a view of the river, and then a creative studio environment on the first floor. So those are the tenants that are lined up for the first floor. Second floor is accounting firm and perhaps a law firm. It's not completely committed. Third and fourth floors are one-user and, and so talking in round numbers, the building is net about 100,000 square feet. So in the office market today, we need four cars per thousand. We need to lease the space more than the city requires. And so that's 400 spaces. This would be around 121 spaces. In our letter of intent on floors three and four, we've worked with city staff, which is, I do want to say has been a wonderful experience. We've secured 100 spaces in the parking garage that we had the picture of down the street for this tenant, working with the city. And again, the city's been terrific. And then we're working with the city to get some parking along East First Street. So the combination of everybody working together on this with these 121 spaces on the surface makes the project work. And the challenge we have is we're competing, the office market is soft, we're competing against West Des Moines, we're trying to get the tenant down there. And so in that regard, with all these things I described, we're going to bring 450 employees to that building if we can put this parking scenario together. And that's, from a practical point, that's what's driving all of this. And then the staff made the comment that, you know, we have to comply with site plan review and building regulations and parking islands and landscaping and all, all those things would, would come forth in that review process. And we do agree to all those, all those things. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Doug. Thank you, Elizabeth. Okay. So we'll go ahead and close the public portion now and we'll go to board deliberation. Anybody have any initial thoughts? I might jump in to start us off here. So, you know, we have all kinds of cases here at this board. Certainly some of us have been around for a very long time and some of us might remember this parking lot has come up before. And the reason it came up, it was related to, there were problems here with beer bottles and garbage and trash thrown around. And somebody was trying to open a business to the north here, that was, I think nightclub related. But a lot of people at the time just said, the parking lot looks crappy, it's not well taken care of. I would certainly see that this would be an improvement within the neighborhood to at least curb appeal. There are other covered parking structures of low design in the East Village. I'm also aware that the city of Perry, they have a nifty little downtown, they have a municipal parking lot for the general public to use and it's covered by solar panels. It's great. This looks even better. I really think that this is a creative way to still use the property as it had been in the past for the supporting use for a business. Yes, it's non-accessory because it's across the street, but it's not like two blocks away, or would be used once a week for, let's say, a worse service than just sit there the rest of the time. And with the solar array on top, you know, the day's going to come and we have to begin to think differently about where we generate our power. That's not how I base my decision. I base it on how this site would be used for itself. But I'm open to any comments or further discussion, but I'd make a motion for staff rec, subject to further discussion at any second. All right, a second. Would there be any further discussion before we vote?
As much as I would love to see perhaps more housing, you know, in the East Village, this has been vacant. this has been vacant and parking for a long time. And as a business owner in the neighborhood, it's really hurting us business owners that the offices are moving out. So, the comment about it bringing in two floors of people who will work there, that can only help the vibrancy of the neighborhood that I make my living, you know, from, and the people that live there want to come down and visit, the people who work and do business there. I don't love the idea of more parking, but I do really love the idea of the solar panels. So I would be voting yes with staff recs.
Okay, so we got a motion. Tom, had you given me the second on that one? Okay, all right. All right, we'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor of approving the request of use subject to staff rec, raise your right hand, say aye. That's across the board. Okay. All right, that motion carries seven to zero. We got seven members. This is so cool. All right, so that motion carries. Keep working with staff on your final site plan for your project, and we wish you well down there. Okay, so that takes care of item number two on this fast-paced agenda today. Item three is a conditional use request at 3451 Easton Boulevard, and Frank will give us some background as we kick that one off.
Chair, members of the board, item three is located at 3451 Easton Boulevard. It's brought to us by Community and Family Resources, represented by Michelle De La Riva. I, the proposal is construction of a 45,000-square-foot, three-story building addition for a full-service addiction recovery and recovery housing campus to include person-centered outpatient services, education, residential programming, administrative offices, and detoxification facility. The existing 5,353-square-foot outpatient services building would be maintained. So the appeal is conditional use for group living, not otherwise classified residential use in an RX-1 district. I would like to go ahead and show what the property is and the setting. And so, here it is, outlined in yellow. And here is a further zoomed-out view of the property. As you can see, it is on the south side of Easton Boulevard. It is surrounded by a natural buffer, has one entrance into the premises. And I went out to the site, and I did take a few photos, see if I could zoom out so you could see the entirety of the photo. But this would be looking east, and it's towards the entrance that goes into the facility. I was parked along Easton Boulevard, stepped out when I took the picture. Here is their access drive as you go into the facility itself. And here is a shot of the existing parking lot that is going to be slightly expanded, as well as the existing building in which they are going to attach the structure to. The existing building will remain. Here is another site of the parking lot, and the location of where the green space of where the building is to be located. Just for some context, I wanted to show, there's a fence that goes around the perimeter of the property. There are areas, though, I think, near the entrance where maybe there's a gate, and then the fence no longer extends beyond that. Maybe the applicant can speak more specifically to any other gaps in the fence, but what I did notice is a substantial natural barrier along with the fence. And so here is a layout plan of what they're proposing. As you can see, down in the bottom right, you can see a, that would be the building addition, existing building, and then this, this pink peach color here, that is the modifications that they are making to the parking area. They are showing some of the modifications to landscaping, enhancing the buffer there as well. They will be required to go through a full site plan review process, and so that process would include fire, traffic, all of those types of review, as part of the conditions of approval. And this is just a layout of the facility. So, the first floor, your office, your shared services, your detox facilities. This would be the second floor. You have some of the other shared services, but you also have what would be the men's quarters. And then this, being the third floor, would have both the women's quarters, along with the adolescent quarters as well. Just some renderings of the property and some of the changes that they'd make. As you notice, they are, the addition is going in the green space. Maybe the applicant can speak more to the impact to the natural buffer. It does appear to be subdued in their approach. They are adding landscaping to further enhance the facility. And so, just a few things about the site. The subject property is not quite eight acres in size. It is zoned RX-1. It's located in between, it's west of the Four Mile Creek. In 2022, the property did go through a rezoning from N3A to RX-1 in anticipation of the programming and the proposal that is in front of us today, in which they are seeking a conditional use. I just want to get to the additional information and make a few notes about some of their programming, which they could expand upon. So, as part of the full-service addiction recovery and recovery housing, it's considered to be a person-centered outpatient services program, meaning they work with each of the individuals to tailor programming specifically to that individual. The stay is voluntary, so the applicant, or the clients that they're serving would have the ability to leave of their own desire. However, staff had indicated that they'd be, or in their narrative, they did explain that they'd encourage any of those folks to stay, but if they didn't, to leave during a normal business-type hours is what they would steer the applicant to do. The goal is for them to house approximately 62 people. That would work, that would be stays of four to five weeks for adults, and two to three months for adolescents. The, as part of that, the detox facility would be provided for up to 12 folks as part of that. They will maintain their outpatient services, which serve approximately 45 to 60 people daily. The staff on hand that they, the facility will staff approximately 50 folks, from administration to medical professionals. Staff would be working in all shifts, would be available all shifts, would be present 24 hours a day, seven days a week. The residence and detox accommodations are typically two beds per room, with approximately 161 square foot in area for room, accompanied by a mix of living rooms, group rooms, classrooms, gyms, kitchen, kitchen, and dining space, in accordance with supplemental regulations that are specific to every group living situation. Their supplemental regulations are highlighted, are noted also in the conditions of approval, as they need to meet those standards as well. They intend to staff the facility at one staff per 12 adults and one staff per adolescent youth. They did indicate that the facility will have, will be fully monitored, and there will be video cameras and supplemental alarm systems, generally intended, so they could address any concerns that might arrive, arise in any number of situations that might occur. Now, staff is, does note that the applicant does need to meet site plan regulations and building and fire code regulations, with issuance of the necessary permits. They also need to coordinate with city engineering regarding an existing eight-inch sanitary sewer facility that runs east and west across their property. So they are required to do that. Staff does believe that the applicant has, that granting the requested conditional use would be consistent with the intended spirit and purpose of the zoning ordinance. We believe that the application satisfies the criteria for granting a conditional use so long as it operates in accordance with recommended conditions of approval. The proposed geographical location and operation of the use or activity adequately safeguards the health, safety, and general welfare of persons residing and working in the surrounding property. We do not believe that it will impair an adequate supply of light and air to surrounding properties. It is set back a substantial distance from neighboring properties. Furthermore, the conditional use would be subject to reconsideration if at any time the zoning enforcement officer finds that the activities have, or the facility has become detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood. I'm going to scroll to the conditions of approval.
Hey, Frank, just real quick. When you say a natural buffer around the property on number four, inclusive but not limited to landscaping and fencing, does, is that generally something that you'll interpret administratively as staff, on what constitutes that?
That is correct.
Okay.
Could be a combination of things.
Okay, got you. Okay. What else do you have to share with us?
Sure. And so, we did receive, we sent out comment cards, and we did receive comments from folks. And I will scroll through those. We did receive a number in support of, and a couple, one of which came this morning. So I do, I will present that on the screen after I scroll through all of them to share as well. And here's the, first, before I go to their neighborhood summary, I'm going to go ahead and show the second comment card in opposition. Michelle, could you please pull up the, thank you. And this being the second comment card in opposition. I'm not sure if you can read that well up there. All right, and then I will go back to the screen, and I will go through the general And that is staff's presentation. Do you, what questions do you?
All right, Frank, hold on. We're taking our time here, but I caught one thing at the end there.
Yeah.
When they closed the meeting out there, neighborhood meeting signup sheet, one person in attendance did, okay, one person in attendance did not wish to provide their contact. How many people were in attendance? Does that show on there? Okay. Okay, all right. I'll just accept that from the ethereal. Okay. Yep, I was just curious, you know, what kind of attendance there was.
Okay. And I can look?
That's okay. That's okay. Yeah, yeah. It was obviously, there was more than one person there. Okay. All right. Questions? You ready for questions of yourself?
Yeah, yeah.
Any questions for Frank? We can check back with staff. Yeah, cool, cool.
So, looking at the staff recommendations, with the first recommendation, what's the purpose of that item?
What's, I'm sorry?
The purpose of the first recommendation.
Oh, okay.
Why the, why any type, any kind of limitation there?
I'm going to scroll. I don't remember it right off the top of my head.
Right there, Frank?
Okay, part of the, part of what we're looking at is the definition associated with the group living, not otherwise classified. And we want to make sure that it stays within that category. And part of that is making sure that the programming for the overnight operations would be greater than 30 days in length. So that is part of the rationale for making that a criteria, a conditional approval. So that is part of the rationale for making that a criteria, a conditional approval.
And Frank, as a, as a board member myself, we've gotten into this before, with any kind of approvals, that what we're approving is kind of what you told us you planned to do and what you've presented for scope and size and impact, and you know, if we give you this approval, you can't just go run out and change it to, oh yeah, we're just going to have people live here year round, kind of thing, right? So just, yeah, if it was four to six weeks, I don't know if I would care. If it was two to four months, I don't know that I would care, but the idea is you're describing it, stick to the condition as the applicant has proposed what they want to do, because that's what we're basing our decision on. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay. Yeah, that's a great question. Other questions? Okay, well, let's hear from the applicant. They waited patiently, so has the rest of the audience here today. As you might have seen our process, we just need your name, address is appropriate, you've got up to 10 minutes.
Do you want the, like that, or do you want the?
Good afternoon, I'm Michelle Della Riva and I serve as the Executive Director for Community and Family Resources. We are a not-for-profit agency that has been in business for over 55 years. We have services in 14 different counties and we are excited to be part of the Polk County community and I appreciate your patience. I know you guys have been here a long time this afternoon. Our program is, as I stated, a not-for-profit program. We really specialize in substance use treatment. We started over 55 years ago, really as a research institute that really looked at detoxification and how to safely detox people. Over the last several years, we really have expanded our programming to include outpatient services for mental health, so that'd be therapy, psychiatry, gambling treatment. We also specialize in residential treatment services. We have three residential programs amongst our 14 counties. One's over in Iowa City, one is right here in Des Moines, and the other one is up in Fort Dodge. Our Des Moines residential program is at 3806 Easton, so it's right down the street from this property. We also have a halfway house program here in Des Moines that's in the Drake neighborhood on Kingman Boulevard. And that, all of those programs have been in this community for over 25 years. As part of our expansion, what we've been looking at is really looking at what is needed here in Des Moines. So one of the things at this little property that you see, which is in a beautiful eight-acre area surrounded by these beautiful trees, is a little tiny outpatient clinic. Each and every day, we have 15 to 20 individuals that come for walk-in services. That's for substance use and mental health treatment. Along with our programming, so when we talk about that we serve 45 to 60 people in this location every single day, it's because we provide group services. So people come in, substance use treatment is typically in a group format. Many of our individuals that come in use that Dart bus that's right at the end of that location. What we found is that we have a much higher need for services, especially after the pandemic. As many of you may know, whenever there is some sort of a public emergency situation such as that, especially one like this where a pandemic, where people spent time at home alone, you start seeing a rise in substance use and mental health concerns and problem gambling. We've noticed that too. As the people are starting to go back to work and they're being required to come back to their offices, people are really struggling. What has happened is that people who normally did not drink or use any sort of substances started to drink and use substances. Not all people, but quite a few people. In 2019, one in 10 individuals were diagnosed with a substance use disorder. That has now risen to one in eight. So we certainly have seen an impact. The reason that we want to move our campus onto this particular parcel is because we want to expand our services. We would move our adult residential program onto this campus. We would add a detox program, which is our specialty service. It's a 12, it would be a 12-bed program. What we find is that when people come in for detox services and there's a residential program attached and they can walk right down the hall to residential, they're less likely to leave and go home. So just like you and I, we go to the doctor, we're in high need, we may be prescribed medication that we're supposed to take for a certain period of time. We start feeling better and we may not, may not take the whole medication amount. Maybe it's a 10-day script, we only take it for seven. We find that happens with people's substance use disorder too. If they go to a detox in a hospital, and hospitals do a great job, I'm not disparaging their work, they may leave that detox program with the recommendation of continuing with residential. They feel better, they don't come. Then they end up going back to the detox program when things get worse. So that's why we want to have all of our programs on this campus. Also, what's missing in Des Moines is an adolescent residential program. We are looking at adding a 16-bed program. What we know, that currently in the state of Iowa, there are two adolescent residential programs, one that we operate in Webster County, and then there's one in Ames. That's not enough for this state. We certainly need more, and a big community like this can really benefit from that. So again, we are certainly looking at this property. It's a beautiful space, it has a natural buffer. We feel like it is going to truly be offering healing amongst nature in the middle of a town. You aren't going to find that type of space anywhere else but here. That is really what we're looking at, is expanding. Our program that's down the road on, at 3806, we are going to look at maybe some other type of use for that, that may be additional treatment services, but we'll make that decision after we get this program up and running. So again, it is to increase the number of beds, it's to put all of our services under one roof, so our staff have that ability to move back and forth. It also will increase our safety and security, having this upgraded building for this, for this people that we serve as well as for the community. So I'm open to other questions you may have.
Questions for Michelle? Michelle, just, just very briefly, you've been here for some time with the existing services you provide at this location, right? Do you have an existing working relationship with either neighboring property owners, your neighborhood association, any other, you know, social service providers? Are you like a friendly neighbor to those around you?
I would say we are. We certainly have partnership with other not-for-profits throughout Des Moines, so we work with the homeless shelters, we work with the food bank, we work with other treatment agencies, we work with the, there's a primary healthcare that's close by, so all of those types of programs we work with.
Okay, and, you know, this is a conditional use request, but it's kind of like almost a second step of consideration. You already sought rezoning of the property.
We did.
Was that supported by the Plan and Zoning Commission?
Yes.
And was that then, then next step is to city council, is that fully supported by city council?
I believe it was.
That's, yeah, I mean, I'm kind of asking it for the record here, but you obviously got your rezoning, but it was supported throughout for that. And with your building design here, it looks like you're trying to build on your existing open space away from existing residential houses, right? You wouldn't really be any closer to your neighbors than you are now with your-
That's correct. So the space that we'll be using is this lighter green space here on the picture. We really are doing our best to leave all of the existing trees. We will have to do, I have to ask the architects a little bit, a little bit of trimming over here.
Right.
To get, you know, our building onto the site. That's why we're doing, going up and not out, because we really, I mean, the reason that we're on the site is because we also enjoy the beauty of the trees that are around it.
Yeah, and if you would disturb too many trees of a certain size, there's a tree mitigation ordinance and all this, so that you, yeah, yeah, you just can't clear cut your forest there, right?
Nor would we ever want to.
All right. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay. Thank you, Michelle, we'll check back with you in a few minutes.
Thank you.
You can sit down. And is there anybody that wishes to speak in support of the applicant's request? Come on down. Thank you for your patience and waiting today, we just need your name, address, and you've got five minutes.
I'm Daniel Anderson, I live at 3432 Easton Boulevard in Des Moines. If you look at the picture, the house with the car in the driveway is mine. I've lived there since 1987. I'm a retired administrative law judge for Iowa Workforce Development, and in retirement, I was a volunteer and substitute teacher at Orchard Place. Parenthetically, I'm also the grandson of an alcoholic and problem gambler. I am aware of the program that Family, Community and Family Resources has. I'm familiar with similar programs through Orchard Place. I think they have a solid program. I find that they have been very good neighbors in the years that they have been there. And basically, well, you've also, will have seen my comment in support that I mailed in. Basically, I'm here just to reemphasize that I support the program and I hope that they meet your approval. Thank you.
And Daniel, since you did come down today, I see a couple cars in the driveway, there's got to be two retired people.
Oh, the, the black car in the-
On the north side?
On the north side.
North side, okay.
Yes.
So you have a good view of the driveway, the bus stop, sidewalks?
Yes, yes I do.
And in, in general, you kind of reference it, but what are your general observations? Do you see people hanging around too long or loitering?
I do not, I do see people standing on both sides of the street waiting for the bus.
Sure.
And I know that when the group meetings are letting out, in particular, you want to be kind of careful there at that intersection. There's, it's a hill as you're coming up to Easton from the property, and those of us with driveways along there can't see real well, so we're a little more cautious. But with the residential program, that's not going to impact the amount of traffic coming in and out too much.
All right. Appreciate you coming down today. Thank you for your comments. Anybody else to speak in support of the applicant? Seeing none, anybody to speak in opposition? And again, just need your name, address, and you've got five minutes.
Father Chris Fontini, the pastor of St. Joseph's in Des Moines. We have a school that's right by there, about 220 kids, and I think one of the things is we're trying to work for the protection of, the safety of our children, making sure they're safe, and they're coming out in the mornings, 8:15, car lines, 3:30 with car lines, bus lines. I think one of the things, concerns is what happens when a resident wants to leave? What does that do to our children, you know? We want to, we're trying utmost, trying to make sure that there's safety and protection for them. And while I appreciate the fact there's doing something, having laudable efforts in helping people who struggle with various addictions, and there are some security things there in place, I just wondered, are there security personnel on hand, you know? So I, I really think we've got to, we've got to put our students really at, as a priority, and that is a concern, I think, of Mrs. Ernst, the principal and myself, as we're looking at all this. So I just, that's, you know, I think we've got over 200, 220, 220 children that are under our care, and we are responsible for them, we are the shepherds for them, and it's, it's very important that we have some security to protect them. And that's, that's, that's where we're at, I think. That's all. Thank you.
And Father, while, appreciate you coming down, and while you're here, you know, this is an expansion of the use, maybe a little different use, but to date, have you had any problems with their operation or any concerns that you've seen tied back to impacts to you all?
I know we've had, and this is pretty typical, we get, we get people that come in our, come and go on our property looking for help.
True.
That's, that's expected, you know? But it is a concern, I think, if they're coming around, when our kids are out in the playground, or they're coming out of car lines, bus lines, and, you know, to make sure that, you know, nothing happens to them, you know, they don't become a statistic or that, so.
But, but at least to date, related to this facility, you haven't seen any problems specifically from there impacting you?
I don't think, I don't think-
I'm, I'm not going to dig any deeper, but I was just kind of curious, yeah. Okay. All right.
And I do, I do have a question also.
Sure.
I live extremely close to, to where you are, and aren't your bus lines and car lines on East 33rd, north of Easton?
There's 34th Street, that's close to 34th where the parents are coming up. And, and there's also, the bus line is on East 33rd and Easton. So, but yeah, they use, they use 34th Street.
Okay.
Yeah, and you guys just finished the school expansion, if I'm right, is that correct?
Well, not quite.
Work in progress.
It's, it was supposed to be done in November, but we're still, yeah.
All right, keep at it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Anybody else to speak in opposition?
Yes, my name's Ken Dales and I'm here representing Grandview Christian School. Our address is 1701 East 33rd. Our property is where the bottom of that yellow line is. That's our property south of there. We have 14 acres on our campus, and we have a school, excuse me, of 500 students, and it's middle school through high school. And our property is used constantly. Teachers take their kids' class outside if it's a good day, and they'll have a class on the football field, the playground area. The football field is busy, obviously for football, soccer, we do track practice down there, year-round camps. So the campus is a very busy campus, not only during the school years, but right now over the summer months, we still have kids out there practicing for everything. So to say that we've ever had a problem or I'm in opposition of this, I'm not, and we, as a school, we're not in opposition. We like what the program is doing, we just question whether it's the right place because it's centered between two schools. And we haven't had a problem with the place, but we've had encounters with three people from the place on our campus during school hours, because it's very easy to come out of the back of that property and go south and it cuts right across our campus. So we have confronted a couple individuals that I've talked to personally that said, we told them, hey, we just can't have you on the campus during school hours, it's an open campus, you can come back here at night, all that kind of stuff. And they said, yeah, this is what we were doing, we're coming or going from that facility on the outpatient basis. So my reason for being here is we would like to see a security fence put in that funnels everyone up towards that bus stop instead of having the ability to, if they decide to leave at 2:00 in the afternoon and cut out of the campus and head south, they come across our field when we have a teacher outside with a group of students, or we have athletic, or the coach out there with athletic stuff going on, that's our number one concern. And your attorney mentioned on the second thing that you guys were talking about, that you guys could address safety issues. Well, that's a huge safety concern for us is, you know, I don't know if there's four or five, when somebody's going through rehab, there's phases that they're in, and somebody that leaves there in phase one or two is a different individual than someone that leaves there in phase four or five. And if they confront a student or a teacher, or cut through a class and there's some kind of altercation, that's what we want to avoid. And that's what I'm hoping you guys as a group can address. And, you know, if you can say, hey, yes, you're going to put up some kind of a security fence so that can't happen, that's what we're here for, to ask you guys, your help on that, okay?
Yeah.
Just a quick question. You mentioned three individuals that you have spoken to. Over what period of time?
I've been a security director there for five, the last five years, so it's been in the last five-year period. I'm going to say like maybe 19, 20, and 22, something like that, I can't give you exact dates. There was one a year, two of them spoke to me, the third one didn't say a word. He listened to what I had to say and he moved on. I can't say that he was from this facility, but he fit the same general characteristics of the other two, but it was over a five-year period.
Okay, thank you.
And just a- And just another brief question for you. Our map doesn't go far enough south to show how your property relates to the neighborhood, but, you know, a lot of times it's a moth to the flame thing. Is there like a quick trip or Casey's south of you? What, what, what would, you know, if they came in through the front door and the driveway, what's, what's compelling them to come your-
The fairgrounds, and there is a come and go or get and go right there on the corner of East 33rd and University. So it's just, yeah. If you look to the right where it says that P1, that's a huge ravine of trees that goes back through there, and it cuts all the way into, like, north of University. So there's a lot of homeless camps back in that area as well.
Well, and that was another question I had, too. Yeah, if you've identified some folks related to this neighboring property, have you seen other people on your property that probably shouldn't be there over time?
Yes.
I'm guessing so.
We have a good neighbor over in your lower-left corner.
Sure.
Watches our property quite a bit, and they'll call us and say, hey, you've got somebody sleeping in your bleachers-
Yep.
...on the football field. But when we come in in the morning, they're usually packed up and gone, but, yeah.
Yeah, I've seen some of that with the large wooded area near, near where I live, too. Yeah.
Thank you for your-
Yeah, appreciate you coming down. Thanks for your comments. Anybody else that wants to speak in opposition? And/or even neutrality? You know, there's just a comment, a general, hey, think about this. Anybody else? Open the floor. Okay, seeing none. We'll do staff, further staff questions, zoning officer if needed, and then come back to you, Michelle, to close this out. Do we have any further questions for staff? And Chris, anything you need to add? If you want to, feel free to. I think we've committed enough here.
I don't think so, other than just to reassure neighbors that the zoning enforcement office is there. If there's complaints and concerns, we work closely with our neighborhood inspection department on homeless issues, if they need to get in contact with us, if there's issues with the conditions that were imposed, we'll be happy to assist down the road.
Right. And this may or may not be for you, or maybe back to Frank, but, you know, we had that item four, a natural buffer around the property inclusive, not limited to landscaping, and fencing, provided and maintained. You know, if perhaps the facility itself is pretty close to a neighboring property to the south, without us trying to dictate length of fencing and stuff administratively, outside of us, if we granted general approval here with these conditions, with what you've heard and saw today, would you might sit down and see about some interpretation to determine what is in the best entrance for some kind of appropriate buffer and fencing?
Absolutely. We'd be happy to come to the table and, and work with the applicant-
Okay.
...on any, any questions they would have or any requirements.
All right. Appreciate that.
And clarify those conditions.
Yeah. Okay. Frank, you want to add anything? You good? Okay. All right, then we'll close the public portion and go to board deliberation. What do you think? Jump right in, Heather.
I think this is a great addition to the city and to the county. We definitely don't have enough adolescent resources for rehabilitation, for mental health, for substance abuse, and I would be very much in favor of this with the conditions outlined by staff. Fence or no fence? I mean, it does have a condition in there that talks about the natural landscaping and the fencing. I, I think this is important for a city. I think the pandemic proved that we're all just a few months shut-in away from developing any kind of issue, and it really resonated with me. So I think having more beds, especially for the youth, is really important.
And I understand the use is important to you and probably almost everybody, but based on what they've proposed, do you feel that it would not cause any undue impact, blend in?
I mean, this looks like it's a little bit of an oasis within the city, right? I mean, I, I can't think of a more ideal part that's not already industrially zoned. And a few of the neighbors were nice enough to send in comment cards, and one was nice enough to come down here. And I think that, yeah, it's a concern that there's some Christian schools around there, but I have to wonder, like, what security are they implementing? Because these days at school, things are not the same as they were 20 or 30 years ago. So, you know, we live in a city in a metropolitan, and things are going to happen, and maybe everybody needs to be, you know, taking their own security more seriously, if that's a concern.
But based on the, on the setting, you, you feel it meets the requirements for conditional use?
I do.
Great. Other thoughts?
I, I agree. I think it's already in use and had been in use for a while, so it's not going to affect, I guess, too much of what's happening, other than a positive effect for people that need it. So I, I agree. I kind of think it'd be a blessing.
I agree with that, too. I actually drive down Easton and back many times a week, it seems like. And the only time I've ever even seen the facility is when I had to take my youngest son there. And, but you never see it. I mean, it's so remote that you don't see it. I don't even notice people at the bus stops, so I'm very supportive.
Okay. All right. Yeah, great, great comments by all. You know, I don't expect that somebody has a six-foot, I don't know, super-duper security fence around an eight-acre property. I can't run the math on that, how many thousands of feet that would be. But I would, if we were inclined to improve this, I would encourage staff to think closely administratively about, depending on how that building is oriented, its closeness to certain parts of the property lines, that maybe be appropriate to have some kind of extra fencing. Even if it was internal, sometimes internal fencing can point people toward the exit. But we've closed board deliberation, so I won't take any more comments, and nobody needs to agree with me one way or the other. Would there be a motion one way or the other? Opened any other comments? Marlaus.
I move to approve with the conditions set out by the staff.
I'll second.
All right, clear enough. Motion by Marlaus, second by Heather. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
All right, that motion carries 7-0. And I was surprised by the statistic of 1 in 10, then 1 in 8, but if you sit and think about it, yep, yep, it could be somebody who we know. So I wish you well with your operation, and, you know, I referenced your neighbors earlier. I would encourage you, and I encourage the neighbors, including the church and school, to work together. They're all important parts of our community, that social fabric of our community. Thank you very much. Appreciate everybody's patience this afternoon. Do we have any other business items aside from minutes? Okay. So our initiation for our new board member? And actually, since everybody's here, you will not be here next month with a pre-scheduled trip of some significance. Maybe in, in September, we could have appropriate initiation after the hearing. I would encourage people to keep that in mind. I'll leave it at that. All right, those that were here last month, if you've reviewed the minutes, any changes? If none, would there be a motion for approval? I'll make that motion. Second by Marlaus, all those in favor. All right, you can't vote because you weren't here, so Michelle's got to take that down. So we got Dave, Rhonda, Mel, Marlaus, and Heather, right? Yes, and Heather. Is that good, Michelle? Tom, you, you, you were gone last month. Yeah, Tom was gone last month. Yeah, so we got five of us. Gary, do you want to remind our board members? I think maybe there was a communication, but as far as how they can attend meetings?
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Since I got everybody here, listen up for just a second.
So in the last legislative session, there was a change to the open meetings law that is now in effect that allow, or that, where meetings such as this, electronic attendance is allowed-
By board members.
By board members, correct.
By board members, right.
And, and, yes, and, and that is without, with or without good cause, essentially. I think in the past, there was a requirement that, that a member had to have a reason for why they were attending electronically and provide that reason on the record, that is no longer required.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, potentially. As, as, as I suggest, I love to see your smiling faces here in person, but, you know, certainly if you have a reason, you, you could do that, but you're not required to provide one anymore, so. So just want to remind everybody, all right, this hearing is formally adjourned.